All right, folks, I got six o'clock. Please silence your cell phones, devices, et cetera. So at six o'clock, I call this meeting in Saginaw City Council order. Please rise for the pledges.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honor the Texas flag.
I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and individual.
Thank you. Please be seated. Item two is the invocation. Is Matthew Collins here? Oh, please, thank you. Come up here. Yes, sir. Please, thank you for coming.
Yes, sir. Thank you for having me. Let's bow our head in prayer. Dear heavenly Father, Lord, we just thank you for today, God. We just thank you for the opportunity to come together as a city, Lord, and to just, to take these items before our city, Lord. And God, I just pray that as our city council and the members of our community meet tonight, Lord, that you would just go before them. Lord, that you would give them wisdom and guidance and direction. Lord, I pray that you would just keep us safe. Lord, continue to bless the city of Saginaw and its leaders. And we love you. We praise you in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Matthew. Appreciate that. Item three is honest participation. If there is an item which you wish to speak upon, please see the city secretary and fill out a form. I don't think we have any public hearings tonight. No, we do not. So if you want to speak on a listed item, you can talk to city secretary. She will set you up. You are willing to allow to speak on any item that is posted. Item number four is the consent agenda. A is action regarding minutes of July 20th. B is action regarding change in city council meeting day from Tuesday 17th to Tuesday 16th. C is action regarding building improvement grant with Community Link. D is action regarding capital improvement advisory committee recommendations. E is action regarding resolution 21-19 approving a negotiated settlement. I have a request to pull B, C, and D. So I will entertain a motion on A and E only at this time.
Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda A and E as presented.
Second, Charlie. Although the favor raised your right hand. All right. With the record in effect, we do have a quorum. Mr. Larson and Mr. Beasley are out this evening. So let's go to B, which is, hold on, I'm pulling it up. Action regarding change in city council meeting date from Tuesday 17th to Monday, August 16th. Is that Janice or is that Gabe? Who would speak to that? And sort of, I guess...
Sorry about that. We're changing the meeting date back to Monday so we can meet the requirements for the tax code as far as the tax rate.
Am I understanding this is for the de minimis tax rate, correct? It has an accelerated schedule? Maybe Kim can explain that real quickly?
Yes.
Just why we have to do that?
Yes, although when we talk about the budget and the tax rate, you'll see that the proposed back tax rate is now less than the de minimis tax rate. But we've gone along this road. I'd like to just continue with the schedule and get the budget adopted at the 16th.
Okay.
And the tax rate.
Any questions on this one? Cindy?
First of all, I noticed on Facebook that it says city council meeting update. The city council meeting to act on the proposed zoning change has been moved to Monday, August 16th. The citizens, not the council, received a letter from Mary Regal that said, "This is happening." But it hadn't even been passed city council for approval yet. And I kind of have a problem with that. You know, I wish that we would get those notifications, even if they emailed a copy of those to us that they send out to the citizens. But I was kind of curious who authorized that letter to go out with that statement that this, this date had been changed.
Thanks for bringing that up. That's a, that's a great point. So you'll recall, we've had our preliminary budget calendar for several months now, which has been consistent with what Kim has presented. That notice for the zoning case had to be sent to the Star Telegram, which is our paper, you know, of record to advertise. So I hope that answers your question.
No, not really. Because it's had, this is on our consent agenda and we haven't even approved it yet. I think it would have been better to say that, you know, we'll move this meeting date to the 16th pending approval by the city council on such and such a date, rather than, you know, telling the citizens that this was a done deal.
Can, can I say something?
Yes, ma'am.
On the, as far as when we have to notify people, the residents get the notification, but we also have to get it in the newspaper 15 days prior to a meeting. So there wasn't time to do all that. If we waited until now to put it in the paper, we wouldn't be able to meet that deadline.
You could still put the 16th through 17th.
We don't want to confuse people, you know, by putting both dates. And there are public hearings that are scheduled for the 16th as well.
And one of the other citizens said, "This is the, the 16th is the first day of school and may discourage good citizens from attending." That would keep people from voicing their side. Please keep this as it is or move it to the next week. At least this one particular agenda item.
Yeah, and we're not moving it because of this, the agenda item on the McElroy project. We're not, we're moving it because of the tax rate.
I understand that, and they understand that.
Okay. Then, I don't understand what these, I don't understand. I guess the assumption was the city council would approve this because it's just a meeting date. We're not canceling anything. We're still going to discuss the same items, just on a different date due to the tax implications. So I don't understand why it's, I know we should have worded our letter a little better, but I don't understand why it's a huge deal.
Well, Preserve Park West had been talking with their citizens in the area that were affected by this, and they had had the 17th on their calendars and they were prepared to meet on that day. Now they have to change it based on a letter that had not been officially approved by the city council.
I understand, but they can be a little bit flexible. I mean, I'm sorry, that's just how it has to work due to, unless we want to push that item, you know, out two weeks because we couldn't do it. We have to, the meeting on that Monday, just for the tax rate. There's, they don't have a choice.
Well, I understand that, but they're asking. So, you know, it, it doesn't hurt to bring their concerns to the council and let them know that the council is listening to them. And what we decide to do, we'll have to deal with those, that decision.
And I agree, we should have sent out that letter. We should have stated the letter, said, should have said pending council approval. Said this is a legal notification, but it still didn't, we should have stated something like that in that letter. Should have been a little clearer. But I...
I mean, this is already a hot topic and then to come out and get something like this, now the citizens are even more upset than they were before. And this is, this is their neighborhood. It's not your neighborhood or your neighborhood or my neighborhood. This is their neighborhood.
And, but we're not moving it due to the neighborhood issue. We're moving it due to the tax issue. I'm sorry. It's just caught up in the same meeting.
And that's the point. Their meeting happened to get sucked back in because of the tax issue. They understand and they're okay with the, the tax decision being held on Monday. They're just asking that this particular agenda item not be moved back because of that.
So is your proposal then to have a meeting on Monday and Tuesday?
We could do that. We had voted, we had discussed, not voted, but we had discussed it probably a June meeting, I think, about having an extra meeting anyway, just to talk about the tax.
We discussed having a retreat on Saturday to talk about taxes, but we hadn't discussed having two council meetings back to back. That's just a different, different plan.
But, I mean...
What does the rest of the council think, I guess?
So, we had to advertise per the state requirement, so regardless, I believe we have to hold the public hearing as advertised, which would be the 16th.
So the, the option you have is if a majority of council on the 16th decides that it was not appropriate to move the date based on the concerns of the neighbors, you can open the public hearing and then table the public hearing and the item to a different date that is at least 72 hours later or greater. And then you don't have to incur the cost of re-advertising.
And it sounds like this can be very confusing if we do that. Some, it may be a little confusing either way. And it's unfortunate. I don't know what else we could have done to make both things happen. We have to, these are both issues we have to advertise for. That's sort of what we're, what we're stuck with. These are both issues, the, the public hearing for that and also the tax, what we have to advertise, and that sort of sticks us to dates. What does the rest of the council think about this? Any other thoughts? Mary, go ahead.
I would like to see this come to a resolution, the McElroy situation. So I understand that we have to change the meeting to the 16th for tax code purposes, and I would like to see the McElroy situation also on that meeting. I think many residents have expressed their views. And most, most people that have been following this understand all of the pros and the cons. And so I doubt that there will be any new ideas coming forth whenever that should come before us that we haven't heard before. And I encourage everybody to come in. I think most of the people will still be able to come. On Monday, we're getting pretty much notice. So the few people that might not be able to come on Monday, I don't think it's going to have an impact. Excuse me. And there may be some people that can actually come more easily on Monday than Tuesday. Everybody's schedule is different. So having the McElroy item come before us one day prior to when it was going to come before us, to me, is a non-issue.
You make a good point. We did give them 15 days' notice. So we tried to give them notice. It's unfortunate. We tried to give them at least some notice, though. That's a good point. And Mr. Tucker?
Gabe, not that I'm going to throw you under the bus, but yes, I am. If any of the citizens have a question or an issue and can't make the, the council meeting on Monday, can they send you their questions or...
Absolutely.
Let their voice be heard.
Sure. And if, if someone can't, you know, attend in person, if they want to send a prepared statement, we can read that into the record. You know, council member Big Horse, when, after the meeting, if you want to share anybody you want me to contact personally and let them know, happy to do that. I've been in contact with a couple of the residents. So, yeah, we'll, we'll make sure everybody knows when the hearing is and if there's any, that needs, anything that needs to be shared on the record of the meeting, we're happy to do that.
I just want everybody to have their voice, if that's what they want to do.
Well, they could forward it to all the city councils.
Yes.
We'd know what's going on.
Normally, I get bombarded with this stuff like council member Big Horse does, but I haven't heard a word this time.
I think a lot of people were worried because school starts that day and school, the first day of school is always real hectic. And so I think that was one of their big concerns.
That was a key concern.
It's been on several pages on Facebook, so...
Do we, on our announcements, do we say a date and a time or just a date?
No, we say both a date and a time.
We do?
Yes.
See, we could bump it later if that would help people, but...
So again, like the city attorney mentioned, if it's the council's pleasure, we could hold the meeting and then postpone the action. I mean, nobody's saying there has to be action. We do, because we've advertised, have to hold the public hearing on that date.
And, and you don't have to take the item up. You can take that item up as the last item on the agenda. If pushing it until later in the evening would be more accommodating to folks.
That's a good point.
Regardless of where it is on the agenda, you can always, as the mayor, decide that we're going to postpone that to the final item on the agenda.
I think the biggest concern is that big red bold letters, the city council meeting has changed. It will be on this day, and then they look on the agenda for the meeting tonight and they see that we're voting on it. And I think they're very concerned about that discrepancy. And, you know, to me, that's disturbing. It sounds like decisions are being made without the council.
It's unfortunate, but we had to send out legal notice. I don't think having the meeting, opening the meeting on 16th and delaying that to the 17th, I think that would be even more confusing. It's a good idea, but I think it'd be really confusing for folks.
I think we need to correct this problem for, from this point forward.
I think we need to have one meeting, and it's on the 16th. We'll do the 16th. Start at six o'clock, what we said. We can push this item to the very end. Give folks a chance. Everybody else okay with that?
And if anybody has any questions, they should just text, I mean, email us.
Well, is there a better way that we could word this?
I haven't seen the notice. I, I will tell you that state law, which is legislated, mandated by the legislature, requires that you state unequivocally, "This is the date and the time and the location of the public hearing." So there's no way to sort of soften it and say, "Maybe on this date or maybe the next date." Because if we did that, then the legal, the notice wouldn't satisfy the statute in and of itself.
Even though it hasn't been before the city council.
Yes. I mean, so whether or not to issue the notice prior to council voting on it is a policy decision. So I can't weigh in on that. All I can say is the statute says that you have to say the date, time, and location of the public hearing without being, without equivocating, basically. It has to be clear. Now, as I said, you can still open the public hearing at that meeting and then table it to a future meeting without having to re-notice. But if, if you don't open it and table it, then, and you pick another date, it's going to have to meet the, the number of days out, et cetera. And so that would push it out at least another two weeks or more.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Are there any other questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion on this item, on item B.
Mayor, I make a motion that we approve item B on the consent agenda.
Okay. Do I have a second? Mr. Tucker? Although the favor raised your right hand? All those opposed? All right, thank you. Item C, action regarding business improvement grant with Community Link.
Good evening, mayor and council. As you're aware, this is a program that we started a little over two years ago. Kind of a redevelopment grant that we provide to our businesses have an opportunity to, if they qualify under, with, or with various eligible enhancements, to improve the appearance of their facility. Could be code compliance, could be parking lots, signage, a various number of things. At the last, well, first, so thus far, we've had 22 grants that we've, as a city, have administered. Four, three of those have been repeat customers and believe the, getting my numbers mixed up. No, the, about $88,000 worth of grants have been administered by the city and about 300 and, gosh, about 300,000 have been, dollars' worth of improvements have been made by the, the grant recipients. This is a grant that was brought to you or in executive session to discuss on July 20th. About a grant from Community Link Saginaw. They'd requested about $10,000 for two, two separate grants, two separate $5,000 grants for a total of $5,000 for code compliance and interior, interior enhancements. And the council at that time decided preliminarily to award a grant of $7,500.
Are council questions? Questions for Keith? Cindy?
First of all, Keith, I think you have done just an amazing job with this project. The fact that you've been able to generate this kind of excitement is truly amazing, and I love what it has done for our city. Community Link was our first big recipient, what, two years ago?
Yes. I think they were, it might have been the first or the second one, yes.
You know, so they were the first. I, I remember that.
It was BK before Keith, so I...
Yes.
And I don't have that in front of, that information in front of me, but yes, yes, I think it's the first.
Yes, it was. And while I have the greatest respect for Community Link, once again, they do not meet the vast majority of the criteria as far as, you know, you know, they're not a taxpaying entity. And, you know, I was looking through here, they don't fit a lot of the priorities that are on the application that I've noticed. But we also have a limit of 7,500, I mean, of $5,000 per year. Is that correct?
Per item, yes.
I thought it was per year, not necessarily per item.
It's per item, per year. If so, if, for example, if Quick Car, they're a two-time recipient. The first time when they applied, they did interior renovations, and then probably about, give or take a month, about six, seven months later, they apply it again for an additional, for another grant, and they were awarded that, but it was for something totally different within the eligible enhancements. And they can do that. They just can't apply for, say, $5,000 for, for a sign, to redo their sign, and then six months later, apply again for $5,000 to redo their other sign. They can't do that.
Okay. And once again, you know, I have a lot of respect for Community Link and what they do. But I really feel like this should be applied to our small businesses here that do, you know, supply the city with revenue. And, you know, I just wanted to get on record saying that I, while I do not oppose this, I think it should be limited to $5,000.
And that, that decision is totally up to the council because what, what staff's job in this case, it's me, is to, whenever I, when I hear from businesses and they, they're applying for grants, I do a significant amount of homework on my end, just to get it ready to take to y'all.
Yes.
And then when I present it to y'all in executive session, that's your decision.
I understand, but I was not here at that meeting and I just wanted my, I wanted that vote to go on record. And why.
Any other questions, council? If not, I'll entertain a motion on this item.
Mayor, I make a motion that we approve item...
C.
C, on the consent agenda with the $7,500 that we voted on in executive session.
Do I have a second? Mr. Tucker? Although the favor raised your right hand? All those opposed? Okay. Item number D.
Mayor, just, just to clarify for the minutes as well.
Yes, sir.
Since we can't formally vote in closed session.
Oh, that we discussed.
Discussed, yes. Okay.
I will amend my motion to say that we discussed it in executive session.
We are on item number four, D. Action regarding capital improvements advisory committee recommendation regarding land use assumptions and impact fees. For that, Rick Trias, Director of Public Works.
Thank you, Mary. This, I'm mayor, I'm Mary. Thank you too, Mary. This is a thing that we do twice annually. It's required by state law. And it's just, basically, we have an advisory committee, a standing committee, that, that looks at our capital projects that are funded by impact fees. And you recall, the end of last year, we actually did away with our impact fees. We had healthy fund balances that are sufficient to fund outstanding capital projects that are funded by impact fees. Impact, purpose of impact fees is that growth pays for growth, so these are system-wide. You know, a good example would be a water tower. And so a maintenance project where you replace a water line wouldn't necessarily be funded by, or would not be funded by impact fees, but perhaps a new water main, a larger diameter water line that would serve an entire new area of the city would be impact fee eligible. So anyway, this oversight committee looks at our capital project, looks at our fund balances, and then, as required by law, either tells that we're doing a good job or we're not doing a good job. So if you have any other questions or any questions, I'll try to answer those, but...
Council questions for Rick?
Yes, sir.
All right, Cindy?
What exactly is included in this? And I, I guess I was looking around. I didn't see a value on what this is going to cost the city.
There's, there's no cost. Our capital, our capital project plan, which is a, you know, public record, annually, you generally get an update on our capital plan. Some of those projects are impact fee eligible, so I can get you a dollar amount of the remaining projects, but it's miniscule. In fact, that was the reason that we elected not to continue collecting impact fees. We're still a pass-through for City of Fort Worth since we're a customer city. They collect impact fees, so we pay theirs whenever developer comes in and taps into the system. But, but as far as our infrastructure is concerned, we have sufficient funds to cover any outstanding or remaining capital project. So I can, I can get you the, the budget, but I have to show you those fund balances and what remaining projects that we have, if that's helpful.
I was kind of curious because all I see here are to advise the city council that project expenditures are on schedule and land use assumptions are valid.
Yeah, that's right out of the, right out of the law. It's a statement right out of the law, so...
You know, it's just, it doesn't give you any information.
It doesn't tell you a lot. But, but then again, it is a committee that's charged is to oversee that, that function. So we're not, we're not asking the city council to, to give that recommendation. I guess the committee's work is, is defined under that. So at your pleasure, would you like additional information, a future council meeting, or...
Yes, please.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions, council? If not, I'll entertain a motion on four, D.
Mayor, I make a motion we approve four D on the consent agenda as proposed.
Cindy, second? Although the favor raised your right hand? Excellent. Thank you, guys. Moving on, item number five. Student apprentice program update. Kevin? Welcome, sir.
All righty, mayor and council. It's good to see you guys again. Promise you I won't be too long on this one here. Just like to tell you guys a little bit about the summer, what we've done, about a great new program we've started. So a common joke, but sad reality among all government workers at every level is, you know, when you work for the government, you're going to be overworked, understaffed, and underfunded. It's a sad thing, but it's something that, one of the challenges that you just get with government work. And so about April or so, gay, early April, late March, they approached us with an idea of what can we do to try and get some new faces into the city, doing work that helps, that helps some of the overstretched departments. So what we created was the student apprenticeship program, brand new here to educate next year's leaders through today's practice. This gives them the opportunity to really see what it's like to be in public service as a actual worker. So it's a little bit different from stuff in the, programs in the past that educated, which was very good. They also educated this during this program, but this actually puts you to work. It's a little bit tougher, but a little bit more fun, too. This program targeted high school-age students, undergrad as well, were open to it. But perfect target demographic would be 17, 18-year-olds getting fresh out of high school or about to be at that level, who are, maybe they want to be, go to college, not sure what they want to pursue, maybe they want to join the workforce. This is a perfect opportunity for them to try and get some interest in what local government can do, especially here in Saginaw. So early in April, mid-April, we started advertising. Things went very well. We had about 32 applicants, so very popular program to start off with there. May 14th was our deadline. The students started to work on June 9th. We brought on about nine of them, so from 32 down to nine. And all those positions went to great students that really impressed us. And they went to different departments that had indicated they need some help. I'll show you those here in a little bit. But we had a few luncheons throughout the summer, just to get everybody acquainted with each other, teach them a little bit of valuation, make this a good learning experience for them. But yeah, so the program will last until, it's a 120-day period, so October 9th will be their final day if they choose to go that far. Some may go early because of schoolwork, we understand. But the participating departments here, whereas the animal services, library, police department, public works, and the rec center, so all very important jobs that really needed the help. I can tell you, the animal shelter specifically, they were down some folks for sure, and our guys really were able to help them out very well. So I'm very thankful. Some of their jobs, they'll tell you a little bit about those, but basic office work, helping out with the administrative, administrative-type things, shelter cleaning, record maintenance. And for some of the lucky few, they actually got to get down and dirty, replacing water meters and helping out general landscaping ideas. We really pulled from the experience of a different current employees now, who started when they were young with the city. It used to be stuff like this when they were, back in the day, started 16-year-old is part-time cutting grass. Now look at them now, 20 years later, helping us develop a similar program now. So these are our nine students here. They were very impressive, along with where they were assigned. I'll go ahead and introduce them here in a little bit, but we had Alessandra Luzon with the animal shelter, Zach Starnes over at the animal shelter, Joseph Cooper over at the library, Miss Alyssa Grayzing at the police department. Public Works got a good chunk of them there. So Jacob Chestnut with public services, Jordan Puccarello at the, with water, along with Edward Guerrero, Devon Motley over at the rec center, and Logan Reams also at the rec center. So a great mix of students there that were able to really help out the city in a very critical time. So I will let them go ahead and introduce themselves here. So we'll go ahead and start with Jacob. They're just going to tell you a little bit about themselves and what they did over the summer. They're just gonna tell you a little bit about themselves and what they did over the summer.
Start the evening. Sorry, uh, I'm Jacob Chestnut. I have worked, uh, with the public, uh, services. I have done streets, a bit of parks, and now I am, uh, working with the water department for a bit. I have, uh, done a little bit of everything. I have done the, uh, mowing, the weeding, uh, cleaning out the bathrooms, the trash, the doggy pot stations. Um, just, uh, some asphalt work, cold and hot. Um, just whatever they told me to do, I got down and did it.
Absolutely. I will say, Jacob is our first success story of this program, so, uh, he was offered a, uh, full-time employment opportunity. So, as long as he can get his driver's license, we'll be happy to keep him here with the city. So, this is a perfect opportunity. He, uh, freshly graduated out of high school, getting right into Saginaw. But, uh, hopefully, he'll stick with us. He's a good leader. He'll be able to do something very good for the city, so. Very good. Congratulations, Jacob.
Thank you.
The paycheck.
Um, so far, it was parks, just cause it was a little bit of everything.
Thank you, Jacob. Next, we'll bring on Jordan here.
Hello, I'm Jordan Puccarello. Uh, worked for the water department. Uh, it's a lot of fun. Uh, had fun with everyone, got along with everyone. Um, pretty much all I did was clean out water meters. There's second day here, we had to dig up a road and kinda clean out a sewer system, so that was fun. A great way to start this off. Uh, turned off, I've turned off people's water, I've told people I'm turning off their water. You, you don't really get the best reaction when you tell them that. It's kinda like a, why? I'm just, I'm the intern, I don't know. It's, it's a lot of fun. Uh, I'd recommend. There's times where I'm just, where it gets hot out there, and it's like, man, this, this kinda sucks, but paycheck was nice. Uh, it, it was, it was a lot of fun. It was a good way to spend my summer. Uh, now I'm working with Kevin. Uh, it's going pretty good, but, uh, yeah, it's a great department. Uh, probably the best one.
Mr. Jordan, I have a question for you. How's this, uh, this program affected your future?
Uh, that's a great question. I haven't really thought that far ahead. I don't really have a strong thinking process.
I mean, has it helped you make a decision on what you wanna do with your career, or what you wanna avoid in your career?
Yeah, speaking of that, uh, a little bit, yeah, I kinda wanna avoid that a little bit. Not that it's bad, but it's kinda like, mm-hmm, I don't know. I'm not really the best in the water department. I don't know.
Absolutely. It's all a learning experience for him, and so, uh, a good thing about this program is it's flexible. So recently, Jordan was in an accident, so he's been on office work with me, so he's getting, trying a little bit of both, so.
Y'all ever, uh, flipped a truck and rolled it, like a painful roller coaster. It's a lot of fun.
All right, thank you. So, Joseph.
Hi, I'm Joseph Cooper. I was working at the library over the summer, so it was a lot of fun. I'm glad that we have a program like this to really see what local government's like, so it was nice. Uh, I met a lot of people. I tried new things, so that kinda sums it up. Uh, I guess that's, that's kinda it. Did y'all have any questions? Are we good? Okay, all right.
No, I do have a question for you. What, what was the best part of the summer for you?
Well, it was a lot of fun to really work with the people, cause I feel like the library is really important, and it's not just books. There's like a lot more that goes into it, and like, uh, there's computers for people, there's printing services, we teach classes. There's people to like, learn better English, so they get better jobs, so it's really fun to see that there's programs like that, you know? And I had AC.
Did you find any good books?
Uh, I did, I did. Um, a lot of, a lot of comic books.
I definitely know, I didn't know a whole lot about the library until I got here, so I, I'm right in your shoes. It definitely teaches you quite a bit. So next, we will, we will bring on Miss Alyssa here.
All right. Hello, Mr. Mayor and Council. My name is Alyssa Grising, and I've been a student apprentice at the police department in Saginaw. And I can honestly say it's been very much of a perspective change for me. I've, uh, I'm studying criminal justice and psychology at Texas State University, and I wasn't really sure where I wanted to take my career after graduation. And working at the police department has given me such a great insight into the everyday operations that normal citizens don't know about. And I've been working particularly in records, you know, maintaining records, keeping up with the retention, destruction. And it's made me really appreciate how much goes on in the city that nobody knows about. And it's, it's given me a new, interesting perspective on where I wanna go after I graduate and what I think about city work. And it's given me such a great respect for everybody who works at the city, and it made me appreciate all that we do. And I was able to do like some write-outs, and I did some drug testing, and then like some dispatch with nine, with nine-one-one. So it's been amazing to be able to come here and enjoy all that Saginaw PD had to offer.
Y'all know Alyssa is a graduate of our Mayor's U Council as well.
Yep, I was first class. So this is like home for me, coming back. Any questions?
So when are you gonna come back and be a police officer for Saginaw?
Twenty twenty-four is my graduation, so maybe you'll see me back here then. Thank y'all very much. I'll do my best. Thank y'all very much.
Thank you, guys. So, yeah, uh, these are just a few of our students here. Some were unfortunately a little sick, um, few were out. But, uh, we're praying for them, hoping they'll be back soon, but just wanna get them in, in front of you guys, let them put some faces on. So, uh, getting to see you guys here and let you guys see who's really working here and all that they do. So, overall, the, uh, response from participants, as well as from the departments, has been incredibly positive. Thankful that it actually worked the way I was hoping it to, so they were able to do some very good work for us. Uh, all of this could not have been possible without some of our very important career coaches, program, and program advisors. So part of this program, they had a career coach, which would help give them some general advice on, uh, what working for a city is like, what that career path looks like. Uh, these people were heavily involved with, uh, interviews, uh, helping me shape this program, uh, different things through that. So, uh, could not have done it without Miss Melanie, Melanie McManus, our Director of HR. She helped keep everything straight for me. Uh, Miss Ellen Ritchie, I'm sure, uh, Joseph will tell you, she's great. She definitely, uh, made a big impact on him with the library. Uh, Jared Kersey over at the waters, uh, over at the water department, very good, worked directly with these two guys back here. Uh, helped them be a mentor as well, to show them a little bit about the program and department. Glenn Reeves, our environmental technician, very good. He helped out with the interviews, as well as, uh, advising on the, what the program looks like. Uh, Mark Andrews, he's still around, so he's helping us out there, uh, interviews and whatnot. I thought I heard a question. No, okay. Uh, our Lieutenant Brandon over there with the police department, uh, there's something at the police department, it must take a village to run one of these students here. So they've got quite a few here. Sergeant Espinoza over there, as well as a, uh, our record supervisor, uh, Tara Clance out there helping us as well. Uh, I helped, uh, along with the program, and helping out with our interviews was our two current interns right now, uh, Job and Abdullai. They were very good at helping us out, and thankfully, things went well. So, with that, that's all I have, unless you guys have any questions.
Thanks, Kevin.
Thank you.
Great work. Thanks, guys. We're gonna move on. Students, y'all don't have to stay, okay? So just to let you know, you can if you want to, but you do not have to, so. Item number six, uh, update on Saginaw switch yard food truck park. Keith Reinhardt.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I was, had a, a thought, kind of a vision, uh, about a month or so ago. Uh, the, wanted to bring to y'all, we, I come to y'all every once in a while, about every five or six months, and kinda give you an update on our building improvement grants, just kinda tell you where we are, the accomplishments that y'all have made, and decisions y'all have made. But, um, this was something that we haven't done yet, and I, and I thought I would bring to you an update on where we are with the investment y'all made in the food truck park. Um, Miss Vicky can't, couldn't be here tonight. Uh, she's probably watching at home TV, so wave to Vicky. Uh, so I, I'm gonna, um, do just kind of a brief introduction and then turn it over to the star of the show. First of all, my name is Vicky Weldon. No, I'm, I'm gonna read that part. This is a, this is such a, um, exciting time for Saginaw, because, uh, we, we, you know, and economic development, I found it's really hard to do economic development during, during a pandemic, uh, cause a lot of businesses are shutting down and such, and social interaction, and the six-foot distancing and everything. Uh, but we, as a city, opened up a food truck park, which requires people to get close to each other, uh, during a pandemic. Uh, we opened it up the very first month in September, I believe, of last year, and we had, um, well, our first day, we had one food truck park. Or one food truck, one, uh, was Kona Ice. Thank you, Kona Ice. They still come back. Uh, in our first month, we had thirteen. In fact, I'll give you a quick rundown, just kind of where we've gone, um, over the last eleven months that we've been open as a food truck park. We started with thirteen in September of, uh, twenty twenty, went to twenty-five, forty-two, sixty-two. And I'm gonna skip on up, uh, cause we pretty much hovered in the eighties after that, uh, eighty food trucks each, each month, until July, when we had a hundred and thirteen, which is pretty, pretty amazing. Um, I wanted to turn this over to, to the star of the show. Again, this is, um, Miss Jennifer Weldon. She's a, a graduate student at University of Texas El Paso. She, along with two other students, approached, approached us back in April about a graduate project. And, uh, Miss Jennifer is also a Saginaw resident. Uh, she's helped out significantly, more than anybody that under, understands and can comprehend how much she's, how much work she's put to this program, uh, but I'll, I'll let her talk a little bit about that.
Uh, Mayor, City Council, all the leadership in Saginaw, and everyone gathered here. I wanna thank you guys for allowing us to speak this evening and give you guys an update on our amazing, uh, food truck park. As, uh, Mr. Reinhardt stated, we opened in the middle of a pandemic, um, at a time when people couldn't be around each other, were, um, at home, and, you know, just morale being low, and we decided to open this food truck park. And I know people must have looked and thought, wow, that's not the best time to open a food truck park. But let me tell you, Saginaw is determined, and Saginaw is very forward-thinking, and they said, no, 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 we've got this, we're gonna open this. Um, the switch yard began in September of last year, and it is, was ran by, uh, Miss Weldon was chosen to be the managing director. And, um, she is amazing, and I am able to work with her, under her, um, as the switch yard volunteer. And I'm also a technical writing intern for the Community and Economic Development Department. I started that in May. I'd like to begin with showing you the philosophy that we have adopted for the switch yard. These five statements here, um, were part of my project as an intern, and I worked with Miss Weldon to come up with these five statements. And they encompass what we believe at the switch yard, what we are at the switch yard, what we do at the switch yard. Um, number five is very important. We speak a lot, if you follow our Facebook, about the spirit of Saginaw, which is kindness. And the spirit of Saginaw is so evident at the switch yard, with the vendors, with the patrons, with the support on Facebook, with the support from our council members, from our leadership. The spirit of Saginaw truly runs deep in the switch yard, and it is very important to us. And as we continue to grow, that spirit just continues to grow, and the spirit of Saginaw continues to grow as we, uh, develop the switch yard and share it with people outside of, uh, Saginaw. I'd like to mention that we had some people drive down from Colorado that had seen the switch yard, they didn't drive down for the switch yard. They drove down here. I, that would've been really cool if they did. They drove down here on vacation, saw the switch yard on Facebook. So we've got people from Colorado that look at this Facebook page and look at our social media and say, wow, Saginaw. They said, where is the tall buildings? And I said, Saginaw doesn't have any, but we have grain mills. And so they came to Saginaw and they got to eat at our food truck park, and that is just amazing. Um, moving on, um, these are some sentiments from our vendors. These are the food truck owners that come out every day, in the heat, in the rain, in trucks that sometimes have no AC or very little AC, and work ten to twelve hour shifts, and they come out consistently. They truly love being at the switch yard. Having this, these kind words said by them, it's just so meaningful, because it's not just the patrons we serve. We also serve those that support small businesses in Saginaw, food truck owners or small businesses. And to hear them say, we love the switch yard. Um, my favorite is best food truck park in Texas, but I'm biased. Um, the switch yard is our home. We love the community in Saginaw. So, the community has really made our vendors feel welcome and want to stay, and it attracts new vendors that want to come also. Uh, Vicky was going to speak on this slide, as she is the managing director. I'm just gonna sum this up real quick. Um, these are some of the things that Vicky does on a daily basis, on a weekly basis, on a monthly basis. Um, we, I just wanted to show how much work it takes, from Vicky's standpoint, to make the switch yard happen. I am the volunteer. I'm, I'm, Vicky calls me her hands and feet. It's Vicky that does the scheduling, that sits at the computer, that stays late at the rec doing the city calendar to make sure that it's updated, and she does an amazing job. Um, some of the things that she does, parking assignments, email communication, just your general everyday things that maybe we don't think of when we think of a switch yard park, but these are so important to keep it going. And on top of this, um, Vicky just was promoted, um, I believe in May, to recreation services manager. So she is managing the city's, uh, vast and broad and incredible recreation department, on top of doing all these things for the switch yard. And, as I said, and I'm not just saying this cause she's my mother, she does a great job. Brings us to our next slide, switch yard volunteer. That is me. I'd like to give you guys some background on how I came to be the volunteer. As Mr. Reinhardt stated, I, um, along with two other of my classmates, did a project at Utah. And we approached the city manager and Mr. Reinhardt, can we feature the switch yard? And they said, sure, kind of not knowing what we were gonna create, but they went along with it. And, um, part of what we did in that project was create a social media. Switch yard didn't have one before. They were like, only on the city calendar, and basically word of mouth. The, uh, social media was created as part of this project. I had every intention of handing this over to Miss Weldon or Mr. Reinhardt at the end, and I think Vicky looked at it and saw, wow, this is quite a bit of work, and you're a millennial, and you have a phone in your hand all the time. You'd be great at doing this. And I said, I'd love to. I'm from Saginaw. I live in Saginaw, graduated from Boswell. I'd, I'd do anything to help the city. So I said, sure, I can do social media two hours a week. That's not a problem. Well, as you can see, social media turned into a lot of other things. Um, these are not things I was asked to do, or forced to do, or given a list and said, Jen Weldon, you need to do these things. Um, I volunteered. Um, I want to do these things. I want to help the switch yard. I want to help Vicky, because as you saw on the slide before, it's a tremendous amount of work. Um, these are some of the things that I do on a daily, weekly, monthly basis. The big one is the social media content writing. Um, I know that many of you are our fans on Facebook, or Instagram, or both. Um, you see that we put up daily content. We're always out at the events, so that takes, it's gotten, um, about twenty hours a week I do now on the just the social media. So I do all of these things, and I enjoy it, and I'm grateful that you all trust me to say, Jen, help up, you know, we love helping you out. And, um, it means a lot to be able to be a volunteer, and also, kind of, also with my internship, I've created these documents um, in fulfillment of my internship, and also because the switch yard needed these things. We did not have vendor communication templates. We did not have a scheduling template. And it was just simply because Vicky did not have the time to do these things, on top of all of her other, um, you know, her, her job and everything like that. So, um, I kinda got a two in one there. I made these for the switch yard, and I also got credit in the internship, so, um, these are some of the things I've created. I've shared them with Mr. Reinhardt and, um, the city manager, and I am very proud of these things. And I love seeing them being used in the switch yard, and I know that they help. Um, just in closing on the volunteer, I love doing it. I'm a resident of Saginaw lifelong, and to be able to contribute in a, this. I'm a resident of Saginaw lifelong, and to be able to contribute in this way to the city that I love is just so wonderful, and I'm sure that list is gonna get longer, and that's okay, because I truly love what I get to do at the Switchyard. The Switchyard social media, these are gonna be my slides anyway, so we're good. The Switchyard social media was established in April of 2021. As of August 2021, this stat has changed. We now have about nineteen hundred Facebook followers, one hundred and twenty-five Instagram followers. Instagram's a little less, it's a different platform, but we do get great reach on both platforms. Every message is answered, every comment is answered, issues are addressed, so this is a very interactive, personal platform for our patrons and our vendors to communicate with us. We get our posts shared, we've had our posts shared, I mean, my friend in Ireland shared one of our posts, so we'll say worldwide. On average, as I stand for the social media, it takes about twenty to twenty-five hours a week, started as two, and that's simply because when you have that many followers, you need to keep them engaged, you need to keep them interested, you have to take the pictures. That is my main time in my volunteer, content creating, vendor communication, all of those things. And the Switchyard is a vital component for the success of the Switchyard. Social media is. Without social media, we would not be reaching people, and we would not have that personal interaction, going back to the beginning, that was what was missing last year in 2020. Having this platform to communicate and to let patrons know, when you make a comment, I saw this at the Switchyard, and I have a concern about it, and we answer you back immediately, not in four days, not in a week. It is addressed. If it needs to be forwarded to Ms. Weldon or to Mr. Reinhardt, it's forwarded, and these things are addressed, so it's such an important tool that the city has, and the reach is, we'll bring us to this slide. Got some analytics here, you don't have to read them, but I've got them up here. It just shows that we're reaching people outside of Saginaw, Fort Worth, Halton City, North Fritton Hills. We're reaching all ages, all demographics, from the youngest people that can legally use social media, which is, I think, thirteen. So thirteen all the way up to the seventy-five and above group. So we have an amazing range of interaction, of people that we get to see and that see us, and so it's just really wonderful to have this. It's important to keep it up. It's definitely something that requires a lot of attention, but it is worth it. So this is how we've been able to get new vendors. I think in the last two months, we've added five new vendors. We've added followers, we've added so much to the Switchyard through this platform and through the reach that it has. This was Vicki's slide too, but I've got this one. Switchyard growth. We believe in the Switchyard, and we believe in the future of the Switchyard, and we believe in the city of Saginaw. So we have a vision of how we'd like to grow, how we'd like to continue to develop. Six hookup spots, we're looking for six more. Two pavilions, we're thinking of, we're thinking of one more. We're thinking of misters. We've had a dog, a dog pad area that Vicki has actually sketched out, you know, with a watering station for our dogs, maybe some peanut butter bones and things like that, because we do have quite a canine following at the Switchyard too, if you've ever been out there. Vicki has came up with all of these ideas and has this vision of how we continue to grow, and we cannot do that without the support of our city council, of our leadership, and we want to promise you guys that we will grow the Switchyard. We will have two thousand followers, we will have more trucks, we will have more patrons, and it is worth the effort to see the smiles on the faces, to hear the comments, to, I've gotten some fist bumps, a couple hugs, socially distanced hugs, that kind of thing. So we have in mind not just, hey, eighty trucks is great. No, we want a hundred trucks, we want a hundred trucks parked. So the commitment that we have to the Switchyard is real, and we are promising to you guys that we will continue to put in the work because Saginaw needs the Switchyard. Saginaw needs this community to come together and to have grilled cheese and corn in a cup and all the other great things that we have. We'd like to see improvements, you know, things like that, but these are all doable, and these are things that can be done because we truly believe that the Switchyard has the capacity to grow and succeed beyond our wildest dreams. Finally, I'd like to leave you with some of the images, taken by yours truly. At the Switchyard, you'll see people, you'll see, you can't see their smiles because it's a little far, but they're smiling, I promise. You see trucks, and then I'd like to draw your attention to the large picture. I took this last week at nine o'clock, when I was leaving the Switchyard. I had come straight from work and spent four hours there, interacting, taking photos, and as I was closing the gate and locking up for the night, I just looked at the Switchyard and I thought, what a beautiful place we have, what a wonderful opportunity we have to reach our community and to network with one another, and it's probably my favorite photo I've taken. You can probably hear my voice, like, I get emotional when I talk about the Switchyard because I really love it. That's not just because I get some free coffee and, but I really have enjoyed working with Ms. Weldon and working for Mr. Reinhardt and working with all of you, and we just see so many great things for the Switchyard and so much in the future, and we appreciate your support. We encourage everyone to come out here if you haven't been to the Switchyard. The farmer's market in two weeks, we'll have twelve trucks, twelve. We had one for our first farmer's market. So twelve trucks, we play truck Jenga and kind of, you know, move them around and stuff, so we'd love to see you all out there. I know we see the mayor and Ms. Valerie out there quite a bit, and Ms. Mary, and it's just wonderful. I thank you guys, and on behalf of Vicki, thank you for supporting us and for having me on as a volunteer. The level of trust you guys place in me is very special, and I will continue to do good work for you, for the city, and for the Switchyard, because we truly believe in the Switchyard. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Any questions for Jennifer, but I just want to say Jennifer is a powerhouse. She is a driving force. She, every time I'm out there, she encourages me to share it, and she is very, a vibrant force out there, and we really appreciate your efforts and your hard work. I know you put a lot into this, and it shows, but we really just thank you so much. So thank you, it's awesome. Look for great things in the future.
Are you up for adoption?
That's not what you asked me.
No, thank you for all that you do, you're an amazing young lady. We're fortunate to have you.
All right, item number seven. So at six fifty-eight, we're in a public hearing. Presentation on Proposed Budget for Fiscal Year 2021-22. It's the Kim Quinn Show.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. This is a public hearing on the entire proposed budget we've advertised in the paper, but I'm gonna focus on the funds that we haven't gone over yet. We received the appraisal, the property values from TAD, and so we've been able to complete the process as far as calculating tax rate and completing the budget. So we'll focus on these, first half of the funds that we haven't gone over as much, and but we can, if you've got questions about any of the funds, and since it's a public hearing, I'm happy to talk about any of the funds. So we'll start with general fund. General fund, as you all know, is about a third of the revenues are property taxes. We've calculated the tax rates, and we'll get to that in a little bit, but I did want to mention to you, as I did before, that the proposed tax rate for the general fund, or actually for the, for both funds, is less than the voter-approved rate, and it also came out to be calculated as less than the de minimis rate that we had discussed before. And the reason, well, the de minimis rate is actually less than the voter-approval rate this year, and that has to do with the way the tax rate is calculated as far as the unused incremental, the unused incremental tax rate. So the difference between what was the voter-approved tax rate last year and what we actually adopted is, can be added in future years. And if you recall, because of the declaration of disaster, we calculated the voter-approval rate last year at eight percent versus three and a half percent. I wasn't sure, because the comptroller's office hadn't finished the tax rate calculations, the worksheet that we are required to use until last weekend, if we would be able to use that incremental rate at the eight percent or the three and a half percent. But the way the worksheets are is, the eight percent could be used as the unused incremental rate. So that's why the voter-approval rate this year is more than the de minimis tax rate. Another large, almost a third of the general fund revenues is sales tax. We've talked about that when I talked about the other funds, the street maintenance fund and the CCPD fund, that we have, we are estimating, using the same assumptions, that we'll collect about the same amount of sales tax revenue next year as we have this year, minus the large audit adjustment. We had one large audit adjustment in May, and we know that that's not going to happen next year. Our franchise fees are down slightly, and that just has to do with the cable franchise fees. As you know, there are so many other streaming services and things, people are just not using cable services, and so therefore the franchise fee goes down. Our court fines and fees, we're estimating an average year. Things are back to normal as far as court operations go. In September, in fact, we'll be required to go totally in person, so, and not have the virtual court, as we've had as an option for a couple of months now. So we are anticipating probably an average year for that. Recreation fees, we're estimating about fifty percent of an average year. There are several reasons for that. One, we haven't been operating normal for more than a year now, and so it's gonna take a while for those programs to get built back up. We also have some capacity issues as far as, you know, different rooms being used for seniors and other uses, just, I think, no, my personal, I've got, two of my family belongs to a gym, and they're just not going to the gym now, they're still not feeling comfortable, so we don't know how all of these things are going to factor into it. So we've got about fifty percent of an average year budgeted for next year. Hopefully, that's a conservative estimate, and we'll do better than that, but at this point, we just don't know. We're projecting higher than this current year budgeted for building and permit fees, just with all of the projects that we know are coming on, that will hopefully begin next year or the end of this year. And then the other downside is interest earnings. Obviously, we were thrilled to get such great interest rates when we were borrowing money, but it works the other, in the opposite way, you know, our interest earnings are down. We anticipate that they'll probably be down for next year, too. So we've talked about this before, I just wanted to remind you, one of the things that we want to keep in mind is, we want to pay for ongoing expenses with ongoing revenues, and only pay for one-time items out of fund balance. It's kind of like you don't want to pay for your groceries out of your savings account, right? You want to be paying for things that are gonna be ongoing with ongoing streams of revenues. So first, I've got a list of the items that are added to the general fund that are ongoing expenses for next year. There are several positions that were added mid-year that will have full-year funding for, the administrative intern at the library, the, an inspector in training position, and an adoption and rescue coordinator. So that's included in the proposed budget. There's a human resource analyst position added, that is to assist Melanie in all of the very many things that she does. There's such a variety from hiring and people coming and going, their employment, she takes care of health insurance, she takes care of property insure, the, she takes care of the benefits as far as insurance, but she also takes care of insurance claims for the city, and many, many more things, payroll, lots of things. So this is a position to help her with those many functions. There is also a part-time animal shelter technician. As I know Keith has mentioned many times, the shelter is always at capacity or more than at capacity, and so it's hard for the current part-time position to keep up with all of the maintenance and cleaning that's required. So there's a proposed part-time animal shelter tech added. You just heard from the summer apprentices what a successful program that is, so we have funding in there in the proposed budget for next year to continue this program. There are salary adjustments, we've had many workshops on this. The salary adjustments that are included in the proposed budget are generally three percent for, at least three percent for most employees, except for those that are very newly hired, and then, or up to a midpoint, or what we have is a step four in the pay plan that was adopted several years ago. So what this means is that the pay plan will not be adjusted, the minimum and the maximum levels for any positions will not be increased, will just be moving employees within their current pay ranges. And you've heard from the chiefs especially about the compression issues, and so this was the plan that the department heads came up with to adjust accordingly. We have health, dental, and life insurance costs budgeted at the same level as currently, as the current year. On the insurance side through Texas Municipal League, we have increases in all areas, property liability, workers' compensation, we pay errors and omissions, admissions, and law enforcement liability, so all of those are increasing for the coming year. Some of it has to do with just our experience. We know that we had the claims as a result of the winter storm. Law enforcement liability is just the state, what we live in now. I mean, there's the liability, it's not anything that the police department has done, it's just, in general, law enforcement liability is going up. And workers' compensation, we've had some claims, as well as just overall, those rates are going up. We have a small increase added to the budget for third-party COBRA administration. Melanie does a great job at this, and we don't have a huge amount of people that are, participate in COBRA, but the way the laws have been increasing, that we need someone who specializes in this to manage that program. Credit card transaction fees are increasing, and this just has to do with the fact that we have more transactions through credit cards, and the fees, we just have to pay for that. We will have the last quarter of the comprehensive plan budgeted for next year. If you recall, we started that mid-year, so about three-quarters of that was paid in this current fiscal year, and we'll have about three months for the next fiscal year to finish that project up. Fire dispatch services are increasing, that is to the city of Fort Worth, it's thirty dollars a call, and we anticipate calls will go up, so our costs that we pay to them for those services will also increase. We've got the cost of the annual physicals for the fire department that are going to go up. There also is included in the proposed budget, step-up compensation for firefighters, so if apparatus operators are out, for whatever reason, vacation or sick or whatever, then firefighters step up into that position and will be compensated accordingly. We have an increase in overtime, particularly in the police department and public services department, and that is solely due to these special events. It's great to have all of these special events, but it costs to have workers cleaning up, doing crowd control, those types of things, so we need to include that in the budget. We also have an increase in, a little increase in the cost of lab fees in the police department. We are going to begin an annual taser replacement program in the police department. They're just getting to the point where they need to be replaced, and we're going to do an ongoing replacement of those pieces of equipment. We've included five thousand dollars for inspections, an annual inspection of the sprinkler system, so I guess instead of being reactive, we're gonna be proactive at the beginning of the season and have someone come out and check the sprinkler. and have someone come out and check the sprinklers at all of the city facilities, make sure they're working. If you recall, a couple of months ago, I guess it's been more than a couple of months ago, we, you entered into a contract for mowing, and we realized that it's going to cost quite a bit of money, and so we've got that included, those increases included in the proposed budget. We've got full-year funding for the contract project inspector. That was added mid-year, we'll have a full year, twelve months of that. More animals in the shelter mean there is going to be required more veterinary and care, so there's a small increase for the cost of vets to tend to the animals. We have just overall increases in IT information technology, excuse me, department as well. Computer server and software replacements are ongoing. And then we also have some software increases, software system increases, antivirus software improvements, and off-site backup improvements. And a lot of that was precipitated by the issue that we had earlier in the year. We want to make sure that our system is as safe as we can possibly make it. So that's going to cost some additional funding as well. We have a full-year funding for the retail coach contract in economic development. So those are all a summary of the ongoing expenses that we will need to pay with ongoing revenues. And this next list of items are general fund items that we're proposing to use fund balance. These are one-time type expenditures. There is an alerting system component, which is part of the Fort Worth dispatch system. The fire one, the fire station one component is going to be paid for out of the construction budget. But for fire station two, it will be funded out of general fund balance. There is a small amount of money in the budget proposed for a fire department banquet. There's fifty thousand dollars included for the police department to begin a canine unit. There is the next phase of the American, Americans with Disabilities Act study. We're in Phase 4A. If you recall, we are evaluating our facilities and how, what would need to be done to comply with that. So 4A is proposed for next year, and that's going to look at city sidewalks. There's eighty thousand dollars proposed for that. The public works department continues with the accreditation process. There's funding for that, split between general fund and the enterprise fund. There's about twenty-five thousand dollars for fall protection material that will go around the playgrounds throughout the city. We have five exercise bikes that are scheduled for replacement at the rec center. Carpet replacement at the rec center. There are startup costs to begin a 5K race. As you recall, there used to be a race that was sponsored with the Chamber of Commerce, and that went away a few years ago, and so Keith has proposed to begin a race sponsored by the city. So there's some startup costs with that. We've got, I mentioned earlier about the position for inspections. There's a vehicle for that new position as a one-time expense. There is funding for an awning at the fleet maintenance facility. That's going to allow for protection of some of the, more of the vehicles, as well as allowing for some of those larger vehicles, the maintenance to, and repairs to be done under, undercover there. There is eight thousand dollars proposed for the, a traffic count map update. I think it's been a couple of years since that's been done. And then the big one here, so of, of the about one-point-nine million dollars in one-time expenses, the big one here is this development agreement for the square. We've talked about that again for a couple of years. We think next year we'll actually be paying that out, and that's about one-point-three of that one-point-nine million dollars of the one-time expenses in the general fund. There's also a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, just like the current year, for redevelopment in, on the, along Saginaw Boulevard and in the industrial area. And then finally, the police department is going to have to change software for their records, and it's going to require a new server, server and disk printer for that software.
Can I have a question on, I don't know if this is a one-time expense. Our lobbying effort with, for the DoD property, where is that, and how far along is that? And when are we going to revisit that?
Brennan and I have had a couple of conference calls with the attorneys out of DC, and so what they've advised is, unless there's local support, that there's not a path forward. So I've asked the local commander, Lieutenant Colonel Ford, if he can get an answer from the Texas Military Department, which takes some amount of time. We may lean on our state representative, Charlie Garin, to see if we could help. So thankfully, our, our time, Brennan and I, I think it was just two meetings, has been pretty minimal, but we don't want to engage them again because they, they bill at a, a pretty, pretty high rate.
Yeah. So before we mentioned that we would let it go for a certain period of time, and then really take a hard look at maybe cutting it off. So you think once we hear, in a few months, or hear or don't hear about that decision, that will be a good time to revisit?
Yeah, I, I think so.
Okay, okay, fair, thank you.
And that's a good question, Mayor, and it, and what I'm about to say applies to all of these funds. Since we're, we're following a more accelerated time schedule, we are adopting or proposing to adopt the budget earlier than September, which is when we usually do the year-end adjustments. So we will have, we'll be doing this a little bit differently than we have in past years. We have estimated for this current year, pretty much what we have in the current budget with a few exceptions. And then we'll do our year-end adjustments that, as we always do. And then whatever projects in the general fund or any of the funds that have not been completed will be then rolled forward into next year, and we'll take care of that in the next year's mid-year adjustments. And the next slide is just a slide like I showed you for the other funds. It's just a pictorial of where we are on revenues and expenses as far as the current year and next year's proposed budget. The summary is just what I mentioned about the one-time expenses.
Now that money for the square, that's for a road primarily.
We also, we have about, sorry, one-point-three in general fund, and there's almost seven-hundred thousand when we get to the enterprise fund, you'll see that. So the total commitment was two million dollars.
Is that for infrastructure, water, sewer, and a road?
And I have the numbers here, I'm not going to go through these in detail, but I just wanted to show you what it looks like. We'll, based on the estimate of this year, we'll begin next year with about ten-point-six million, almost ten-point-seven million. We'll end at the eight-point-seven, eight, almost eight-point-eight million, which is a decrease in fund balance of the one-point-nine million. Again, those are for the one-time items. Are there any other questions on general fund? We'll move on to debt service fund if not.
Hold on a second, we're moving pretty fast, so any questions, council?
So this general fund is our expenditures on, on this particular chart?
The revenues are on the top part of the, top part of the, if you're talking about.
Right.
Yes, but that's a typo. The proposed column should be twenty-one, twenty-two, I'm sorry about that.
Okay. So I'm looking under the expenditures under administrative?
Uh huh.
And we adopted one-point-nine-seven million dollars. And then, but it looks like we're at two-point-six million is what it's going to revise to.
That.
What's that, six-hundred and, what about, six-hundred-and-forty thousand dollar difference?
I'm trying to remember what my estimates were. It might have been, it's, it's whatever has already been approved by the city council. So it would have been the items, I think part of it is definitely the comprehensive plan, and that's the biggest thing that comes to mind. We also would have had the lobbyist fee would be in administration, too. So it's, it's only items that have come before the city council for approval that I have estimated there.
Yeah, from what I was calculating in my head, I couldn't remember being that big, but.
Yeah, those are the two big ones that come to mind.
Okay. That clears up a lot, thank you.
Any other questions in general fund? The other thing I wanted to mention is the year-to-date is still through June and not July. I haven't had time to update the year-to-date figures yet for July.
Remind me, what's our requirement for a fund balance? What's our percentage requirement?
We have, we, that is what is in restricted fund, yeah, it's twenty-five percent, and that's where you see the line towards the bottom of the schedule, the restricted fund balance. That's going to be about five million, twenty thousand dollars. So we reserve that, we make sure that, we set that aside to meet our financial management policies.
Excellent, thank you.
If that's all, we'll move on to the debt service fund. Again, this is the other fund, we talked about the two pieces of the tax rate. This is where the other part of the tax rate goes to pay our debt service. So this is where we pay our principal and interest on the money that we borrow, which is what we're doing when we're selling bonds or certificates of obligation. The proposed tax rate is the point, or nineteen-point-four-four-five-eight cents. The current year tax rate is the seventeen-point-seven-three-four-one cents. That's an increase of one-point-seven cents, which is better than what we thought it was going to be when we were educating everybody about how much the bonds were, were going to cost, and when we did the preliminary estimates. Originally, we thought it was going to be closer to about two-point-two cents. So we're gonna, we're going to use one point cent of the total proposed tax rate to increase for the additional debt.
Yeah, so that's, that's exactly just for the debt that we, the voter-approved in the May bond election for those projects, that's what this is for, and the debt we have incurred and will incur this year. So that's why we're raising this rate.
That's right. And if you recall, as part of the education effort, we estimated that the total amount, if we continue, if we issue the whole sixty-eight million dollars will be about thirteen cents in total.
We're still hopeful we're going to get some county money, too, so.
That's true. There's many factors, but I just want to remind all that that was clearly spelled out as part of the bond program.
Unfortunately, we don't have to issue that, that all at once, we issue it in chunks, so we've got time to adjust for, hopefully, accounting windfall.
That's right, that's right. On the next screen, again, it is just the, the numbers, but I did want to mention that the tax rate, another change that the state legislature made is they are, are accounting for excess revenue collections in the current year. And so that's why you see a fund balance decrease of about ninety-four thousand, four hundred dollars. So what that is, is that we are going to collect about that much in this current year, more than what we anticipated. And so now the state is requiring us to use what we've collected in this year to pay off the debt, to pay off some of the debt next year, which helps us lower the debt portion of the tax rate. So that's why we see a, a little bit of a decrease in fund balance. In the past, for example, like the current year, we had budgeted over two-hundred, about two-hundred-and-nine-thousand use of fund balance. We have also used fund balance to help smooth out those increases. So instead of seeing a big jump in any one year, we try to smooth it out as much as we can. Are there any questions in the debt service fund specifically? If not, we'll start talking about the property, the certified values and the tax rate. So these next few slides are just a summary of the appraisals, or the estimated net taxable value. So for 2021, the July certified values are just under two-point-four billion. That is about an eight-point-two percent increase over the values that they certified last September. Of that, just under forty million of it is in new, new value, and almost all of that was residential this year. The taxable value of an average single-family home last year was a hundred-and-eighty-eight thousand, and this year it's two-hundred-and-two-thousand-six-forty-two. That's a seven-point-seven percent increase.
And Kim, what is approximately, what's our difference, or what's our, our commercial tax rate, or the commercial tax value?
We are about sixty-one percent residential, thirty-nine percent commercial-industrial.
Thank you. You just can't stump, Kim, it's impossible. I've tried.
There's lots of things you can do to stump me, Mayor, I just anticipated that question. So this compares the current tax rate to the proposed tax rate. The current tax rate is the point-four-six-one-five-seven-nine. We're proposing a tax rate of the point-four-seven-nine-five-one-six. And then the bottom section shows what the average property tax bill is in the current year. The eight-hundred-and-sixty-eight dollars and twenty-three cents will increase to nine-hundred-seventy-one dollars and seventy cents for next year, based on the, that average value of the home and the proposed property tax rate. I wanted to mention of the hundred-and-three dollars and forty-seven cent increase per year, sixty dollars of that is for the debt side. And I also wanted to mention that is less than what we had originally estimated. The original estimate was going to be an increase of about a hundred-and-forty-two dollars for an average single-family home.
And once again, just for our viewers, this is just the city of Saginaw. This does not include the other, what, eighty-two percent of the tax bill that people pay, approximately eighty-two percent?
That's correct. The largest portion of the, of our residence property tax is the school district.
Right.
Okay, so this is what we are legally going to have to advertise, and that I'm presenting to the city council, are these tax, different tax rates that are necessarily, that are necessary to satisfy the truth and taxation requirements. Based on the values that I mentioned earlier, our no-new-revenue tax rate calculates to be the point-four-four-six-nine-eight-four. The next rate there is just for your information only. The, if we were just at the straight three-and-a-half percent, the voter-approved tax rate would be the point-four-seven-two-eight-zero-four. But because we had the unused incremental rate that is added on to the voter-approval rate, our voter-approval rate for 2021 is the point-four-nine-six-one-two-eight. The de minimis tax rate is the point-four-nine-one-two-three-four. And the de minimis tax rate is the no-new-revenue operating and maintenance portion of the tax rate, plus a tax, the, the tax rate that generates an additional five-hundred thousand dollars, plus that which is required for debt service. And that's how we come up with the de minimis tax rate.
So that takes into account our new, newly-approved debt?
Yes, it does.
Okay.
All of this has been calculated to include that. The next slide is a tax rate comparison. I know y'all always ask for this. Now, I don't have our proposed rate in there, just because I wanted to compare apples to apples. We don't have everybody's proposed rate. So this is just a reminder of where we stand in comparison to some cities in our area. You can see that we are one of the, one of the lowest overall. It looks like Keller is lower, but if you look at it, it's because their debt is so low, their operations portion of their tax rate is higher than our tax rate. So that's just for informational purposes.
We're going to point out the Fort Worth tax rate for those folks that are unfortunate enough to live across the street.
You're right, you're right, they do pay a lot more taxes than the city of Saginaw. So that's all I had prepared for the general fund and the debt service fund. Are there any questions? If not, I'll move on to the enterprise fund.
I have a question. Maybe I'm just misunderstanding something. The 2021 proposed tax rate of 479516 is what I see. I guess that's what you're recommending.
And are you looking at the chart?
I'm looking at Slide 13, City of Saginaw Tax Rates.
Okay.
This one that you have right up here, in the upper right-hand corner. Up, down. Or, I mean, go back up, sorry, the other way.
Yes.
Yeah, this slide right here.
The proposed budget is based on the .479516.
Does that have to go to the voters?
No, ma'am. No.
Because the voter approval tax rate of 3.5 is 472, not 479.
Yeah, I mentioned that's just there for informational purposes only. Our official voter approval tax rate is the .496128.
Okay.
I just wanted to show you what the difference would have been if we were calculating it based on 3.5 and didn't have the unused incremental rate.
And?
So our voter approval tax rate is the .496128. Anything that would be approved over that would be, would need to go for an election.
Okay. And how did we come up with the 479516 over the 472804?
472804.
So the number in the upper right-hand corner and then the second one, the first voter-approved tax rate of 3.5%?
The proposed tax rate will fund all of the items that I listed earlier in the general fund, as well as pay for the debt service required to pay, to pay our bonds and our certificates of obligation that are outstanding. So not just the new 9 million. It also includes the 20 million in certificates of obligation and all the debt that we're still paying off from previous years.
Okay. Thank you.
And I have a question. Have a question.
Please.
So the .496128 is based on the 8 or 8.5% that we used to have before the legislature lowered that cap to 3.5. But then we had the pandemics, so then they let us use the 8% or the 8.5%, whatever it was.
Yes, ma'am. It's kind of convoluted. So we, we still, we are now required to calculate the voter-approved tax rate at 3.5%, but they automatically add in the unused incremental rate. We had an unused incremental rate left from last year, which is the first year that we would, we were eligible to use to begin having an unused incremental rate. And we have the amount that makes that increase higher than what you would anticipate seeing was because we calculated our voter approval rate at the 8% due to the emergency declaration.
So then next year, probably it'll go back down to the 3.5%. Well, we can't see into the future. We don't know what the pandemic is going to do. But unless we have some kind of declared emergency, it will go back to the 3.5 cap and the de minimis, and/or the de minimis.
Yes, ma'am. It will be 3.5% from now on. There still is disaster, but the state legislature have changed the definition of a disaster. And so a health crisis will no longer be considered a disaster. It's more of a natural-type disaster or a terrible tragic type of, you know, building explosion or train wreck or something like that.
And so that would be, have to do with individual cities? I mean, that would be, you're not going to have a disaster across the whole state of Texas. I wonder how they would?
I'm thinking hurricane. That'd be something. It would affect multiple jurisdictions.
A tornado. You know, it could be an individual city or even a portion of an individual city, or it could be a general area, like along the coast, if it was a hurricane.
Okay. Thank you. I do have one more question.
Go ahead, please.
And I'm not trying to put you on the spot. I mean, you do so much at work anyway. I'm just amazed at how much information you already have prepared in your head. What would be the difference to our taxpayers between your proposed tax rate and the voter-approved tax rate of 3.5%? What would be the monthly difference? Or annual difference to our citizens? I mean, we're looking at, what, $8.62 a month?
47, that's about 227,000. So the difference between, tell me again, the proposed rate and the?
3.5 voter-approved tax rate.
.472804. It would be about $227,000 in rev, in general, in general fund revenue, which would be about 1 penny. So for the average homeowner, I can't tell you off the top of my head. I don't, I don't trust my brain to give you a number, but I can have that number for you.
Okay. Appreciate that. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, just one thing before we move on from the general fund. I've mentioned this in the past, like to mention it again. Everyone knows we're growing. Our intent is to add public safety positions, probably sometime in mid-year '22. The issue-
You're talking police, right?
Yeah, police officers. We have one shift firefighter that at some point in the future would complete staffing for the time being. The issue is getting qualified applicants in. So the chief, what we're having to do is take promising folks and put them through the academy. So the decision was to not, you know, propose a budget October 1, knowing that we can't fill them. In fact, do we have two in the, I think we've got two in the academy now, or one? Just one. So there's a lag time there. We fully intend to come back and fill some of those positions. Our sales tax projections are cautious, as always. And as we add more people, you know, that's always going to be a concern. Just want to point that out again.
All right, plow ahead, Kim.
Okay, so we'll move on to the enterprise fund. This is where we account for our water and wastewater operations. As you all are well aware, we purchase 100% of our water from the city of Fort Worth, and 100% of our wastewater is treated by the city of Fort Worth. Fort Worth is proposing almost a 10% increase in water rates and a 15% increase in wastewater rates. The proposed budget includes a rate increase to our customers. So that's the amount of additional, that's the additional percentage that we are going to pay to the city of Fort Worth. And we will pass along a portion of that. We're proposing to increase water rates by 10% and wastewater rates by 5%. And the reason we're not going up the whole 15% is that's just a big chunk in one year. And we haven't, so what I would propose is that we go up 5% in wastewater rates and wait to see what happens next year. It seems like their sewer rates jump around a lot. We increased the sewer rates 5% two years ago. And then we re, no, let's see, we reduced them 5% two years ago. We increased them 5% last year. So they, they've bounced back and forth. So I think a 5% is a pretty safe estimate for now. And then we'll, with a cautious outlook, we'll wait and see what, what they do next year.
So we're eating 10% of that wastewater rate, but how much money are we talking about?
On the expense side?
How much money are we going to have to spend to cover that deficit?
Oh, well, we'll still have an operating, a positive operating balance. Because we, so we build into it not just the cost of water and sewer, but we also pay for the people and all the other operations and maintenance. So we'll still have a positive operating imbalance. About the increase in our cost for water, I'm estimating to be about 250,000. And the increase in our cost of wastewater is about 400,000. The average homeowner, we, the average homeowner uses about 8,000 gallons a month. And so using that estimate, the average person would pay an additional $5.89 a month for 8,000 gallon consumption. Those are the biggies in the enterprise fund. We have some special requests that would be included to be used from the fund balance. Those are two generators, one for the Jarvis Elevated Storage Tank and one for the Public Works Administrative Office. That was a area of weakness that we discovered during the storms that, that hit in February. And so this would help us be better prepared for any event such as that. There's also about $20,000 included for maintenance, painting the interior and epoxy coat the floor of the Longhorn Pump Station. There's also a position added in the enterprise fund. It's a water, wastewater tech one position. This is needed in the water area, but it's also a way to manage the difficulties that we've had in hiring these types of positions. So they're creating a new position that's not going to require all of the certifications, with the idea that you'll hire somebody that has maybe one of those certifications and they could work into getting both water and wastewater certifications. So there's a position added there. And then this is where the other part of the developers' agreement for the square is going to be budgeted. As I mentioned, it's just under 700,000 out of the enterprise fund. And then the next slide is a comparison. We get this from the Texas Municipal League does an annual survey of water and sewer rates. This is a little bit different than what I have in the previous slide because we usually use 8,000 gallons, but they have us, they calculate it at 5,000 gallons. So that's why the numbers are a little off. But we're comparing apples to apples again, so we're comparing just the 21 rates, not what we're proposing. But as you can see, that we are the third lowest of all of these cities for water and the absolute lowest for sewer. The bottom line of that is the average of all of the Texas cities that replied with a population between 20,000 and 25,000. So you can see how we compare to the average, 2897 versus the 3571 and 2555 versus 3464. And again, this is just, these are just the numbers that go into putting those graphs together. The use of fund balance, 517935, will be for those one-time items. The biggest one being the develop, the developers' agreement for the square. Were there any questions or discussions on the enterprise fund proposed budget? We'll move on to the enterprise escrow fund. Rick talked about this fund a little bit earlier. This is where we account for our impact fees that have been collected. And then the only other portion that goes in here is there's a small amount of money that we set aside every year for equipment replacement that goes into this fund. And we're getting down to the, using almost all of the impact fees that we've had, we've collected. We have budgeted next year 250,000 for the Fort Worth meter station upgrade. So that's one of the few remaining projects that are eligible to be used with water impact fees. The, the current year, the projects that we have in this current fiscal year that are being funded with impact fees are the Northwest Du Booster Pump Station and the Saginaw Boulevard 16-inch water line. I think there's just one project remaining, Rick, and that's the West McLaury 12-inch water line. I think that's the only one left and that we could use impact fees for. So there's not much to say about the enterprise escrow fund. Again, it's just mostly the impact fees. And just like I mentioned when I was talking about the general fund, the 16-inch water line might not get finished this year, but for estimating purposes, I have it as if it will be in September. Just like we usually do, we'll do a year-end budget adjustment. And then whatever is left over or incomplete will get rolled into next fiscal year and we'll adjust that at mid-year. This next fund, any questions on the enterprise escrow fund? This next fund is a new fund. The chief has asked us to begin budgeting for it. We've always accounted for police confiscated property and asset forfeitures in this police expendable trust fund, but we've never just regularly budgeted it. And the chief has asked that we start doing that. So we just have a small amount of money that's available for, and there are very specific guidelines that have to be used that they're well aware of and that they make sure that we comply with. There's a small amount of money that's available for, to be spent, and that's $3,290. We're just going to budget that in a miscellaneous supplies account. Any questions on the police? Capital Projects Fund. This is the last fund that we haven't talked about yet, Mayor. The rest of them are repeats from the previous council meeting. So in the Capital Projects Fund, the three projects that we have budgeted for next year are the ones that we just issued the debt for. We've got the construction of the first phase of Knowles. We're budgeting the full amount, not knowing what, what we'll get as far as Tarrant County participation. We've got the design of the library and the design of the senior center. We know that the total amount of, for example, the fire station is not going to be finished by the end of the year, but rather than trying to estimate what that's going to be, as I just mentioned, we'll adjust it at mid-year. We'll do a year-end adjustment and then mid-year adjustment. And we should be receiving the 9 million on, I think it's the 18th. So the other funds are just, I'm not going to go over them unless you all have questions. We talked about all of the rest of these funds at last, the last council meeting. They've changed very little, within maybe $3,000. So I'm not going to, not, wasn't planning on going over all of those unless you're interested in doing that. And we'll move on to the next steps, the last slide, please. We had to advertise this as a public hearing for the budget. And as Bryn mentioned before, for other, for the other purposes, we are asking that y'all table the public hearing so that we can then approve the budget when we approve the tax rate on the 16th, as planned. And the next steps are then, we will post, we'll take a vote. The next item is to take a vote on the proposed tax rate. You're not approving a tax rate. You're just voting that these are the tax rates that I presented to you and this is what the proposed tax rate is. And that will be, that will be published in the newspaper and posted to the website along with the hearing. along with the hearing dates, which will be August sixteenth. If we need to have a budget retreat, that, we have that slated for the fourteenth, which is the Saturday before that Monday meeting. And then that council meeting on the sixteenth, we will have a public hearing on the tax rate. We'll adopt a budget and adopt a tax rate.
Counsel, what do y'all think about a couple of things? One, August fourteenth, Saturday, budget meeting, budget retreat, retreat. Do you think we need that? Do you have significant questions that cannot be answered either here or in a separate meeting with staff? Do we need to have that, that day or that half-day set aside? We talked that we would discuss that at this meeting, so what do y'all think?
It doesn't seem like we will need it this year because, you know, we have, you know, pretty cut and dried, just a few one-time items and mostly the salary adjustments. So, I mean, I'm happy to, to participate if it's needed, but I don't see.
I know Nick said that he had no, no big questions, no major concerns. You talk to Charles, is he in the same boat? I, I have not talked to Mr. Beasley.
Yeah, Mayor, I met with both council members to go over what Kim has gone over, and I don't think they had any issues. Also, let them know that it'd be discussed this evening whether, you know, the council desired to meet on a Saturday. So as, as mentioned, there's not anything more than what's been presented either tonight or in the past, so.
I'm in the opinion that we don't need it. What do y'all think? I'm in the opinion that we don't need that Saturday. I'd like to give you your Saturday back unless we're just, you good? Okay, I think we're, all right, cross Saturday, cross it off. You mentioned, Kim, when, first you said table the public hearing. The one that we're in right now? Okay, so I don't, I don't close it out?
Public hearing for the proposed budget. And so that was the direction, right Bryn? We would table it and then?
Right, the statutes, apologize, the statute's a little unclear. It says to hold the public hearing and then you conduct it at a meeting prior to the meeting that you take action on the budget. But then elsewhere in the statute, it says, "At the conclusion of the public hearing, you shall take action on the budget." So we, we tried to make some sense of that, so.
So do I not close this one out tonight?
So I think, I think you can conduct the public hearing and then just simply table it. So, and then you can close it at the next meeting. If anyone else wants to speak, they can, but otherwise, presumably everyone who has an interest in speaking would speak tonight. And then.
They'll be, they'll be welcome to speak at the sixteenth as well.
Absolutely.
It will still be in a public, so we'll still be in a public hearing.
And there will be another public hearing on the tax rate, which is a different public hearing.
That's right.
To the sixteenth.
Yeah, clear as mud.
It is definitely clear as mud. So anything else, Kim?
No, sir.
Okay. So counsel, other questions? We are in a public hearing, so anyone in the audience wishes to speak, you can approach the, the lectern and go at it. It's a public hearing, so it is open for anybody and everybody to, to comment. Even y'all, absolutely. Seeing no, no other public comment, I will entertain a motion to table this public hearing until August the sixteenth. Cindy second, all those in favor raise your right hand. Okay. This is your table, October, August sixteenth. Thank you, Kim, a lot of hard work. And again, counsel, if y'all have any other questions, please contact Kim. Try to stump her if you can, good luck on that one. But, and also anybody out there listening online, if you have questions about the budget, please contact the city staff, contact Gabe. He can answer your questions or get to with Kim, and Kim will give you all the information, data you could possibly handle. Thank you, ma'am. All right, back on item number eight, consideration, action, consideration and action regarding a proposed budget for twenty-one, twenty-two, tax rate and notice of public hearing. Again, Kim Quinn.
So this is what I just mentioned to you. We are required to publish in the, a newspaper, which will be the Fort Worth Star Telegram and post on our website, this notice of public hearing. And it requires a vote of the city council for the proposed tax rate. Again, you're not voting to approve any tax rate. It's just that these are the different tax rates that are required to be calculated and what our tax rate is included in the proposed budget.
Right, so we're voting on saying, yes, we want to put this in newspapers, say, this is probably what we're gonna be, this is what we're proposing, because it's just proposed now. That's what we're voting on tonight. And at the sixteenth, we will vote for real, for real, if that makes any sense. Counsel, any other questions? On this very clear and non-complicated tax information, thanks to our state legislature. Any questions? If not, I will entertain a motion to, what are we, what are we, what are we approving exactly? What do we call this?
Proposed tax rate.
On the proposed, okay.
Yes, sir.
I entertain a motion on the proposed tax rate. Charlie second. Good, is that good?
I'm satisfied, Kim.
Yes, you're thinking, there's specific language that will be necessary when, next council meeting when we actually adopt it, but there's no specific language required for this motion.
Yeah, and this is one of those squirrely ones as well. They keep changing the statute, so you're not, you're no longer required to have a vote on this, but you're required to publish the results of the vote still. So.
All right.
Might as well have a vote.
So motion on the table. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Post, thank you. Thank you, folks. Thank you for clarifying this all up for us, walking us through this. Consideration number eight, sign consideration and action regarding award of contract for construction of Business Two Eighty-Seven and Saginaw Boulevard Traffic Signal. Ray Trice.
Thank you, excuse me, thank you, Mayor, counsel. Got all choked up because it's been two years since we entered into an economic development agreement with this group, and we advertised and received bids for the project. In fact, I had a meeting with the development group and some of the subcontractors, the inspection group and testing group that'll be providing support for the project. McMahon Contracting Limited Partnership was a low bid, apparent low bid, at eight-hundred-sixty-nine thousand, four-hundred-and-thirty-six dollars and sixteen cents. You may have noticed or may not have noticed they're doing the work on Boat Club Road, all the median work. And so we've heard good things about them, so we are recommending award of contract to them. You'll recall that we also amended the Three Eighty Agreement to, to actually draw down dollar-for-dollar the cost of this project since we entered into the AFA Advanced Funding Agreement with TechDOT. So we're on the hook to deliver the project. And so those funds are available in escrow that, that was attached to the Three Eighty Agreement. So with that, if you've got any questions, otherwise we recommend award of contract.
Questions for Rick? Questions concerned? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the contract for construction of Business Two Eighty-Seven and Saginaw Square Boulevard Traffic Signal as presented.
All right, second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Excellent. Thank you, Rick, appreciate it. Item number ten, consideration and action regarding rejection of apparent low bid and award of construction contract for the traffic signal improvement Bailey, Basel and Knowles. Again, Ray Trice.
Thank you again, Mayor. This project is, well, the recommendation with this memo is to first reject the apparent low bid of Tejas Utilities LLC. That we had, I guess, with the bridge being almost a year ahead of schedule, that put us into a tough spot of having to deliver this traffic signal prior to when we had planned to. We awarded a design contract or an IPO to Kimley Horn at the first of the year. Found out then, of course, the Weber's schedule for opening the bridge within probably a couple of months. So we scrambled to get this project on the streets. Tejas Utilities, the city, the project engineer for Kimley Horn checked references and found out although they had some supporting sort of experience with traffic signals, conduit installation and things of that nature, they really had no substantive experience with, with a traffic signal installation. So we are recommending that we reject their low bid and award this contract to Roadway Solutions, Inc. Roadway Solutions, Inc., as well as Tejas, had some mathematical errors in their bid. So the, the low bid that was read aloud was the three-hundred-and-thirteen thousand, nine-hundred-and-sixty-one dollars. There was a mathematical error, so Roadway Solutions' actual bid is three-hundred-and-thirty-four thousand, three-hundred-and-eleven dollars. The same way with Tejas, they made a pretty significant mathematical error, so that's why they were the apparent low bid at two-hundred-and-ninety-nine thousand, nine-hundred-and-eighty-eight dollars. So about thirty-five thousand dollar increase over, over Tejas. But we have experience and have checked Roadway Solutions' experience, and they're well-versed and well-experienced in traffic signal installations. So we feel confident in recommending award of contract to Roadway Solutions, Inc. Have any questions, I'll try to answer those.
Should I be worried that they can't do math?
You know, that was my first thought, you know. Especially with, with that big an error, but.
It's, it's unfortunately more common than you might think.
Really?
On these bids, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, they're scrambling at the last second, just like all of us.
I appreciate y'all checking up on them and fixing their math.
Yes, we do check the bid tab, so, yeah.
Any questions for Rick? Yes, Cindy?
Yeah, I do have a question. Is there a difference between Roadway Solutions and Road Solutions?
They're two separate companies, two separate entities. They just unfortunately have very close names.
Okay, I was a little confused at first.
Yep. I guess we could ask him the question, but, you know.
Counsel, other questions? Questions, concerns, issues? If not, I'll entertain a motion. Is that good? Do I have a second? Cindy second, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Excellent. Thank you, Rick, thank you, folks. Executive session is thankfully not required. All right, so I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. All those in favor? At eight oh two, we're done. Thank y'all.